Okay, I'm calling the Leaptown Regional School District Planning Board Meeting to Order at 5:32. The meeting's being recorded. We have a quorum, I'm gonna call attendance Charles Kitchen.
I'm here. Here.
I'm here, Carl Stewart.
Present.
George, are you here? No. Tom Burkle? No. Jim DePisa? Is here. Deb Phillips, I don't see her yet. Peter Taylor? Here. Steve?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Hey, John.
Kim? Kim's not on. Susan Smith?
I'm here.
Tara? Nancy? Colin? Nadine is here.
Yes, here.
Bonnie is not on yet. Michael? Michael's not on. Patrick? Is here.
And Michael's coming.
Bill, vote?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Andy is not going to be able to attend, I understand, and Sarah is not on, but Deb came on, Deb Phillips is on.
Yes.
One of those people, some of those people don't have internet.
Okay. Um. Jake is gonna be joining us late. So Amanda and I are flying solo, so be kind. First order of business is approval of the minutes, February 22.
I make a motion, we approve the February 22nd meeting minutes. I'll second that.
Who seconded it?
Deb did.
Deb, great. Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Michael's now with us, Amanda.
And Tara.
And Tara's with us.
And Tom Burkle's in the other room, needs to be moved over.
Okay, any discussion, corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Tom, we're voting on the minutes. Tom, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Wait, do you wanna vote on the minutes, to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter? Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Michael? Michael? Was that a yes? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Think he's having audio problems.
Okay. Patrick?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Did I miss anyone? Okay, the minutes are approved.
Did you get Susan?
Yeah, I think so. Did I get you, Susan?
Yes.
Michael's on now, I think.
Yeah.
Yep, you got me, Lucy.
Okay, great. Michael, can we hear you yet? No.
Ask him to raise one finger if it's yes, two fingers if it's no.
He's connecting to audio. He may have to go out and come back in. Okay, in keeping with our, our new protocol, I'm gonna ask whether there are any public comments at the beginning of the meeting, as well as at the end of the meeting, so we are at the beginning of the meeting, are there any comments from those in the attendee group? I don't see any hands. So we will proceed to item number four, which is continued discussion of the Regional School District Agreement. So Jake circulated to the group the most current draft of the agreement, which has the draft date of March 10, 2023. So I hope everyone's got that and can follow along as we go through these provisions. I just wanna say a couple things at the outset. You'll see some margin comments that refer to Desi's suggestions. We got a rather detailed list from Desi of language changes they suggested, some clarifications, some statutory citations that they thought we shouldn't include. So I've marked those additions in red, they're not really decision points unless anyone has a question about them or anyone takes issue with any of them. But I wanted you to see where those revisions were coming from. So I've got margin notes when there are things that have been suggested by Desi. I also have in this draft, some margin notes of some changes that were suggested by Renee Wood. You may remember that back in November, when we had our first iteration of this draft, Renee sent in a very detailed letter with lots of comments and suggestions, and I spent some time to incorporate the language tweaks that she was suggesting, some of her other comments, and they're in the margin as well. Most are not substantive, meaning requiring a vote, for example, she preferred chair to chairperson and vice-chair to vice-chairperson, so I made that revision. She preferred a different abbreviation for Berkshire Hills Regional School District than we had in the original draft. So those kinds of things, I've just incorporated. And as you read through the draft, if any of the changes are objectionable to you, you know, let me know, and I can put that on the agenda for next time. I thought most of the changes that I've incorporated in, in here actually have made the draft read better, clearer. So I didn't think any of them would be all that controversial. So again, the things that require discussion and vote by this board, in my view, are the things that are bolded in red. The bolded changes are the things that require discussion and vote. Any questions about that before we move on? Okay. So we are sort of getting towards the tail end of things that have to be decided, with the big exception, of course, of assessment, apportionment methodologies, which is gonna probably come forward to the full board at our next full board meeting. I just wanted to note that our next full board meeting is March 29. And then we also have meetings scheduled for April 11 and May 3. So those were all dates that we got a solid quorum for when we sent out the doodle poll. So there was originally an invitation sent out for April 19. That was sent out by Christine. That's not a date for us anymore. We can't cancel that invitation because Christine sent it out and Amanda isn't able to cancel an invitation that was sent out by Christine. But if you have it in your calendar, which I did, be sure to manually delete that, because there is no meeting on the 19th of April. It's March 29, April 11, and May 3. Those are our dates. Okay. So I think we will get through all of the decision points that we need to cover other than apportionment between this meeting and the first part of our next meeting on March 29. I expect on March 29, Jake and Nadine will be presenting a finance subcommittee proposal on apportionment. So that's going to be previewed for the first time to the full board on March 29. And then, then we will finish up the other decision points in the regional agreement on that date, and then have two full meetings to discuss apportionment. That's what I'm thinking is the way this is going to play out over the next several meetings. Yeah, Patrick?
Are we then gonna stick with the fall town meeting plan? Seems like we made more progress than we anticipated.
Yeah, I think we're gonna stick with that plan, yeah. Just because we're too late now to get on the spring warrants, and also there was a feeling, a strong feeling among members of the select boards that this needs its own special town meeting, that it couldn't, it, it really wouldn't work to just tag this onto a full annual town meeting warrant. And I heard that loud and clear from Steve and from Nadine, and I think others agreed. So I think that is still the plan, Patrick. All right, so I apologize for my voice, and there'll be some coughing as well, so I apologize in advance for that. The first issue to be decided is at section 10, which is page 15 of the draft agreement. And before I set this up, I just wanna remind people what we did on section nine. Section nine is the section that relates to amendments to the regional agreement. What's required at the school committee level and what's required at the town meeting level in order to amend the agreement. And so at our last meeting, we settled on two-thirds vote by school committee members in order to move an amendment forward and a requirement of three-quarters of the member towns to approve any amendment by majority vote. Okay, so for amendments, two-thirds of the school committee, three-quarters of the member towns, we've agreed on that. So now we're going to section 10, which is admission of new member towns. And an admission of a new member town is done by way of an amendment to the agreement. Right? So we would be following that same amendment procedure, which would be two-thirds school committee members to move it forward to a town vote. And then three-quarters of the member towns. The only part of this section that we need to decide upon is whether the vote at the member town level should be majority vote, as it is with amendments to the agreement generally, or whether it should be some other percentage, some greater percentage at a town meeting. And I think there was an era here, actually, in this markup where majority vote was deleted and three-quarters was put in red. I think that actually should be in reverse, because for an amendment to the agreement, we don't require three-quarters of the residents of the town to vote in favor. We require three-quarters of the towns to have passed it by majority vote. So I would think that we would be comfortable with that same approach on admission of new members, namely two-thirds vote of school committee members, three-quarters of towns have to vote by a majority vote in each of those towns. Any questions before I ask for a motion on this? Susan?
Yeah, Lucia, I'm, I'm embarrassed to ask this question, but I'm looking at what Jake sent out on yesterday with that regional agreement. And I'm not seeing on my copy, like that sentence that you read, I, I don't know if everybody else has the same version, but it it reads section six, and I don't see anything marked in red in that section.
Section 10.
Section 10, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, I don't see anything marked in red. That sentence reads to me, what, A reads to me, "By an amendment of this agreement adopted under and in accordance with section nine above, any other town or towns may be admitted to the district upon adoption as therein provided of such amendment, and upon acceptance by the town or towns seeking admission of this agreement by three-quarters," and then it's TBD, "as so amended, and also upon compliance with such provisions of the law." Is, is that what everybody else is seeing?
Yeah, so it should, it should read by three-quarters in red, and then majority vote is another option, and that's crossed out.
Yeah, that's not on my copy here.
No, that's not on ours either.
So you're not seeing the deletions, you're only seeing the
Well, I just see the TBD, and it's just bolded, it's not even in red.
There's a line, there's a red line on the side. If you click the red line, it'll bring up the edits.
Yeah, not if you're watching by a phone and you're using your iPad.
Okay.
Using your iPad to view this, sharing the screen may be the best way of doing this.
Yeah, I yeah, I'm just seeing it on my iPad, and I don't see anything.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let me, let me bring it up.
Thank you.
Okay, Amanda, do I have share screen capability here?
Lucy?
Yeah?
Can I just ask, anything that you discuss about anything that was sent by email in the last couple days? I really appreciate to be on screen, because like I said, our internet's been down, and I haven't gotten any of my emails. So I have no reference of what you're talking about at all.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna do a share screen thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
You should be able to share.
But on this one, couldn't we just vote on the concept and leave it to the drafter to draft it for us?
Ah, there we go.
Can you see it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So what I'm saying here, you see it now, majority vote, three-quarters. What I'm saying is what I think this should read consistent, I don't know why that's not tracking, but consistent with the way we have it for other amendments is that this should be by majority vote. Right? So three-quarters of the towns would have to approve an amendment, just as we have in section nine. But just as in section nine, it's a majority vote in each of those towns that carries the amendment. It's not a supermajority that's required among the residents of the town to carry an amendment. So that's what I'm asking people to vote on right now. Everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the only problem I have, Nadine, I see your hand up, is that because I'm sharing screens, I can't see everybody's hands, so I did see Nadine's hand. Nadine, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna be willing to make the motion if anybody, if nobody else has questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Bonnie.
So you just said that it would be three-quarters of the towns, but a majority vote in each of the towns.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
But this, but that paragraph doesn't seem to say that.
Yeah, it does, because it says it right here. Like, in order to do this, you have to amend the agreement. And the procedure for amending the agreement
Section nine above. Nine above, okay.
Yeah, and so section nine says you need two-thirds vote of the committee, and you need three-quarters of the member towns. That's what's confusing. Russ? Russ?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I gotta go into that other meeting now.
Okay.
Uh, but if you have any questions, you can text me, and I should be able to text you back.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks, bye.
All right, so Nadine, are you ready to make your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that section 10 reads that following section nine, the vote must be a majority in each town by three-quarters of the towns.
A majority vote in three-quarters of the member towns, correct?
That's correct, that's what I meant to say.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I don't see any hands. So I'm gonna call for a vote on this. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Tom? Tom?
Tom left.
Oh. Jim? Jim, can you unmute?
Yes.
Thank you. Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Colin, did I see you adjoin?
Yes.
Great. That's a yes to both, right?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael? Michael? Patrick? Patrick, you still with us?
Patrick left.
They're both on, but they're muted.
They're muted, okay. Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Did I miss anyone?
I'm here, Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, hi.
Hi, yeah.
Yes, okay, great.
And George is yes.
Oh, George, great. And George is yes, okay. All right, so that's admission of new member towns, so then I wanna skip, because it's sort of in the same vein, to withdrawal of member towns, which is section 11. So the decision point here in terms of what has to happen at the school committee level, and what has to happen at the member town level, I think the question here is whether we wanna follow the same format, the same protocol for withdrawal. And so it would be, if we wanted to follow the same protocol, it would be two-thirds vote of the committee and three-quarter majority vote of the member towns for withdrawal. So that would be the same as for amendment, for admission, and for withdrawal of member towns. So any discussion of this provision generally before we get to a motion on this? Nadine?
I think consistency is really helpful.
So is that a motion to follow the same protocol and require two-thirds vote of the school committee and three-quarters of the member towns for any withdrawal?
Yes, it is a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second, I'll second it.
Deb seconded. Okay, any discussion?
Tom?
Not seeing any hands.
Yes.
Is there a hand?
Bonnie.
Yeah.
Bonnie, okay.
And, and again, with the member towns, does it need to say a majority in each town?
I think it would be, I think it does say right here is approved by majority vote at an annual or special town meeting in, and then it would be three-quarters of the member towns. So are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom? Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael? Patrick? Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. So the next issue we have to discuss is a little bit more interesting, I guess. Reconfiguring grades among buildings. So I'm gonna go back to section 2G. So this 2G is sort of a summary paragraph, so it lists all of the things that require a supermajority vote of the sub, of the school committee. And we've voted on all of these now, except the one that is in bold. And this is not required. It's just a question mark whether we wanna require a supermajority before there can be a reconfiguring of grades among the buildings. So for example, and Bonnie, you can probably weigh in on this. There was a decision made some time back that it was at the fifth grade at New Marlboro was going to be coming over to Undermountain. And the question is should we, in this regional agreement, be requiring that the school committee pass that motion by a supermajority vote or a regular majority vote? And I don't know I don't know how that vote happened at Southern Berkshire. I know that there was a lot of community interest in the vote, shall I say. And there would be community interest, whether it's a straight majority or a supermajority. But the question that was raised by Mars, actually, when they did this original template was whether we wanted to require a supermajority vote for any reconfiguration of the grades among the buildings. Bonnie? Bonnie?
Okay, there are two different issues at play here. One, the movement of grades among schools. Just the movement of the grades usually. Has been a superintendent's decision with utilization. I think where this really strikes is at the issue of. What comprises the middle school? So then you're getting into an educational philosophy discussion, which is different. Than just utilization of physical buildings. And I don't know if, to me, that seems like two separate approaches. One is more an administrative, that's what you would let the superintendent decide based on utilization. And the other is a much greater philosophical educational concept.
Yep, and so the question is. Do we address this at all in the regional agreement? Or do we just leave this to the school committee and the superintendent? To work through without any special requirement for a super majority vote among school committee members on any of these issues? Colin?
Yeah, I'm inclined to leave this up to the educators. They know the best. And so therefore, whether that's the principals or the superintendent or the committee, I, I, I don't know that there needs to be anything special. I feel like almost drawing it, drawing it out, putting something special there. Imploys something, which I don't know what that is. So I, I just let the educators do their job and configure the school so the, the way they, they think is best. It's my, my uh, opinion.
Okay, uh, George?
Um, I agree uh, completely with Colin.
Okay, are there any contrary views? Is there anyone who wants to include this? Uh, in the regional agreement and require a super majority vote? I don't see any hands up. So I'm just gonna take this right out of the agreement. As I said, it's not required. Okay. So that brings us to uh, item four. Uh, which is the default. Sorry. This is section seven. This is incurring. Uh, debt. This is section seven. So. We know that. By statute, there needs to be a two thirds vote of the school committee. Uh, in order to move forward a proposal to incur debt. And then it, it goes to the member towns for a vote. What I didn't know until I had this discussion, we had this discussion with Dussie. Was there actually two. Different processes under the statute. For putting a vote. To the towns to incur debt. So there are two separate statutory provisions. One is section sixteen D and the other is section sixteen N. And if you'll just bear with me as I walk you through each of them, I think it's important to understand, because it's not. It's not intuitive. It's not the way we think it works. Having lived through this many decades, I didn't realize it worked this way until I parsed through the language very carefully. So under sixteen D. The way it works is after the school committee votes by its two thirds vote. Uh, it's required to provide written notice of the amount of the debt. To the select boards in each of the member towns. And that has to happen no later than seven days after the date on which that vote occurred. And no debt can be incurred until sixty days. Uh, has elapsed from that vote to approve the debt. And then what can happen is a member town can hold a meeting. For the purpose of expressing disapproval. Of the amount of debt authorized by the committee. And if at the meeting, a majority of the voters express disapproval. The debt shall not be incurred. If a majority in any town says no. Then you don't get the debt approved. But if no ta, if theoretically, no town held a meeting. On the uh, proposal from the school committee. The school committee could go forward and incur that debt. It doesn't happen, because no select board is going to take that. Responsibility onto itself and select.
Lucy, we've done, we've actually done it before at Berkshire Hills.
Say again?
The three towns in Berkshire Hills have decided. They have, I think they have forty five days to call a special town meeting, if I'm correct. And we, on minor issues of debt, that's been done before.
Okay, but on the big, the big ones, it doesn't get done that way, right?
You're not, you're not gonna build a new school without taking a vote.
Right, but, but what's interesting is that the way the statute's written, and Steve obviously knew this, but I didn't. Um, there's no requirement that the towns take any vote at all. It's up to the member towns to uh, schedule this town meeting and determine whether or not. Uh, there's gonna be a vote of disapproval. Or an opportunity for the residents to vote to disapprove. So that's the process under section sixteen D. So you would need each, in our case, with eight towns, right? You would need each of the eight towns to say yes by majority vote. In order for the debt to be incurred. And let's think about the new high schools, we're thinking through this provision. So you would need each of the eight towns to vote yes by a majority. There is another process that the stat, statute uh, provides. For approval of incurring debt, and that sixteen N. That's here. The vote of the committee authorizing such debt must be approved by a majority of the registered voters in the member towns, voting on the question at an election. So this is not by member town. This is a majority of all the voters in the eight towns. So it's very different, right? So a town like Alford, for example, could not veto. Uh, the uh. Approval of the debt. If a majority of the voters in the, in the eight towns say yes. So where, we would be voting more like a single district as opposed to eight member towns. So it's up to the school committee under the statute to decide which process. They wanna proceed with. Do they wanna do sixteen D? Which requires a majority in each of the eight towns for something like the building of a new high school? Or do they wanna do sixteen N? Which requires a majority of all the residents voting as a single district in order to incur debt. So the school committee needs to make that decision. And what Dussie told us, they recommend. In all regional agreements. Is that if the school committee can't decide by a two thirds vote. Whether to go with sixteen D or sixteen N, you have a default. You have something in the agreement that says, if the school committee can't muster a two thirds vote as to whether to choose sixteen D or sixteen N. You write into the agreement that you default to one of those two. So what's drafted here is a default to sixteen N. That's voting as a single district. We could draft it the other way and have the default be to sixteen D. But we should have a default, uh, according to Dussie, so that we don't get hung up on what the process is going to be. Any questions or comments or thoughts? Okay, go ahead.
I, I think this contemplates. Where there's a serious problem with the board. So we're, we're talking about some issue that is probably contentious and they're having difficulty with it. And in that situation, I think it would be best to go with sixteen N and require a majority vote. Rather than depend on the uh, select boards to call a meeting.
Hey, Bill? Bill and then Colin and then Bonnie?
I agree with Don um, on sixteen N. I have to say, I really don't like the use of the term default when discussing debt.
I agree.
Uh, but I see it's necessary. Also, a very small nit to pick. Can't we title this not incurring of debt, but incurring debt?
Sure.
Thanks.
And we could eliminate the word default and the sentence would be perfectly clear.
Okay.
So my motion would be to, to use that sentence with the word default deleted. So the process shall be section sixteen D.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Bonnie, second. Okay, Bonnie, do you wanna speak to it?
Um, it makes total sense.
Okay.
To eliminate that, that, that's not why my hand was raised, but I think it makes total sense to change that wording.
Okay, Colin?
What is the um, do we have it uh, existing? Um, default now? Do each of the districts have an existing default?
No.
No. Um, and I wonder, and this is just me wondering, if by. Um, making a default, are we suggesting to future school committees? Which one we want them to choose? And is, is that? I guess, does that go back to what Don was saying about, well, if they're having trouble, we want them to choose one way over the other? I know they can choose either, but the school committees may say, well, this is the default, so we're supposed to pick this one first. I don't know, I'm just wondering.
I don't know. I don't know how future school committees will, how much they'll care about what we thought, frankly. As to what the best, I mean, it doesn't require them, and I don't think you can, though this would be a good question for Russell. I don't think you can require one of the other. The statute says there are these two processes. Um, and the school committee is to select which one they wanna use. Um, so this is just sort of a. A way to get through an impasse on which process to use. It's not gonna go forward unless there's a two thirds vote of the school committee to incur the debt, right? So you need that. This is just whether there's an impasse over the process that's gonna be selected for the votes in the member towns. Bonnie?
Okay, I'm sure that you can talk me through this to make sense. But to me, given the size of Great Barrington. As opposed to the other towns, Sheffield, as opposed to Monterey and Alford. Um, do we wind up? If we go to N, in some ways, because we're saying, oh, we're all one district. In some ways disenfranchising the smallest towns.
Well, I guess, as I said. The school committee is not required to select section sixteen N, right? And so if the school committee feels they wanna go with sixteen D, they can make that choice. This is just about what happens if you don't have two thirds of the school committee agreeing on the process. So uh, I don't think it's very dangerous. Uh, cuz I don't think it's a likely scenario that you're gonna get two thirds who wanna go forward, but you can't get the same two thirds to agree on the process. Uh, but it's theoretically possible, and that's why Dussie thought that it was important to have a uh. I don't know what word I can use rather than a default bill, but, but something that, that kicks in if you don't get the two thirds vote on the process. Yeah, Bill?
Well, the, the um, other side of the coin that Bonnie described. Uh, she's saying, you know, we don't wanna disenfranchise small communities. If we go with uh, D, it's the tyranny of the minority. Um, if, if uh, one of the small towns says no. Um, uh, and all the other towns say yes. Um, I mean, that, I don't know whether that's a good result either.
Right. Which is why I think sixteen N is in there.
I, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion on this before we take a vote? Okay, so all in favor of Don's motion, which is to have the, the process be sixteen N. If the committee fails to elect either sixteen N or sixteen D by a two thirds vote. So all in.
I'm sorry, just one thing, Lucy. We didn't vote on, on the motion that was introduced by Don, changing the word, removing default.
Oh, well, this, the motion was not to have the word default in there.
Right.
No, I mean, the motion was the sentence without the word default in it. So the motion, as I, yeah.
I don't think it was a second, though.
I seconded it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, there was a second. Maybe Bonnie didn't understand the import of the motion. Do you wanna keep your second in place, Bonnie? Or do you wanna withdraw your second?
No, I'm fine with my second.
Okay, good. Alright, so the motion is that the sentence will read. Should the committee fail to elect either process by a two thirds vote, the process shall be section sixteen N. So uh, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom? Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter? Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Oh, Michael, we can hear you. Patrick? Patrick, we still can't hear. Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Marie, are you still with us?
Yes.
Poor Marie. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, okay. Um, great, so we're through. One, two, three, four. So now we're going on to uh, least school buildings. And this was a topic that we started discussing at our last meeting. We wanted to get some additional input from. Beth, is Beth with us tonight?
No, they're at a, Beth and Peter are at a conference in California.
Okay. Alright, so um. Let's go to that section and see if we wanna proceed with it or table it, given that Beth's not here. Um, so that's uh, section. Four. Okay, so it's, it's this part of section four. So this is where the addition. The district is leasing a school building, so the only two. School buildings that would be in play in our district. At least initially would be Egremont and New Marlboro. And so the question. Before this group is, should we write into the agreement? That the district will be bearing all costs, both maintenance, operating and capital. Or some subset of that. And part of the answer to this is actually sort of within the jurisdiction of the finance subcommittee right now, right, Nadine? In terms of how the capital cost would be handled for at least those two schools. But the overall concept, I think, is whether we're all in agreement. That if there's a leased school. The district sort of owns. All costs associated with operating that school, or whether some costs. Are retained by the town, and you'll see a margin note there. Question requiring clarification, who has plow and custodial duties in Egremont and New Marlboro? I don't know the answer to that question. Tara, do you?
We do.
We do. Is that Bonnie?
That's Bonnie. We take care of a custodial.
Okay, and the plowing and all of that?
Yes, it's in the agreement.
Okay. All right. So um. I guess the question here is whether anyone disagrees. That if the district is leasing a school. It owns all costs associated with that school. Whether maintenance, repair, capital. Now, how the capital costs get a portion among the member towns is a topic. That the finance subcommittee is going to have a proposal on. But it still would be. A district cost. It wouldn't be a cost. Of the individual town in which that school is located. If everyone's in agreement with this approach. Thoughts, anyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, is this really more of a question, but? In, in finance committee. We're talking at the moment about. A, a ten ninety split. On capital costs. Um. We haven't adopted that firmly, but that's what we're, we're talking about at the moment. And. If at some point the building goes back to the town. Because that school no longer be used by the district. The town would get the property? If the town gets property, I'm not sure that the other towns should be paying for the capital improvement. Anyway, I'm just, it's something to wonder about.
No, that's, that's a very good point to raise and one that was raised at our last meeting. I think John Silver spoke to this at our last meeting and, and asked this positive, the same question. Um, so I think we should have some further discussion of it. Steve?
I guess my only question, just maybe I missed it. When they're talking about a lease in, in Southern Berkshire, since we don't do that. Is, is there a monetary value to the lease, or is it just a? Uh, at least with no, you know, you're not paying rent.
There's no rent. So the way it reads is, no rental shall be charged to the district by any member town. And then what's in red for discussion, right? However, the district shall bear all costs for insurance, maintenance, repair utilities. And other services associated with the premises.
And that's how it's being worked now. That's not new language.
Yes.
No.
What do you mean? What, what are the towns paying for, Bonnie?
Egremont just paid a load of money. In connection with um the repair and reopening. Of the Egremont School.
Yeah, but that was voluntary by Egremont. That wasn't required under your agreement.
It's, the problem is. And I really think you do need Beth for this. There are certain things. That. We found we could not take on. Because we don't own those buildings. And um. I think you really have to find out, and here I don't know the answer, because I know we poured through the insurance policy. Forever with it. Um. There are issues that arise. Um. I'm trying to put this tactfully. It's. There are certain things that are clear. The word maintenance. Is completely unclear. What the definition is. In connection with this agreement. And it has been an issue, an ongoing issue. In our district. So I think you need. The clarity there. Um, that goes beyond the words that are there.
Well. In your agreement, all it says is. The district shall assume all expenses of operation and maintenance. That's all it says. So this has, yeah, this has more words, right? And so what I'm asking people to think about philosophically. Is whether you agree that it should be all inclusive. Or whether you think it should be a subset. And I'm gonna ask Colin and then John Silver to weigh in on this, because. I, I know that John has thought about this issue before. Colin, go ahead.
Um. Uh, my thought is that. We shouldn't have this specific language in here because uh we're binding ourselves to something. Yes, we have two buildings right now that. That are part of the Southern Berkshire. District that are leased, but what if something, some new situation arises? So. I don't know that we want to be this specific. I'd rather see it, you know, negotiated. On whatever the situation is at the time that the situation occurs. Um, the other thing that I think about, and it sort of goes back to someone else was saying, I think Carl was saying, you know, what, or Donna was saying, it goes back to um. The um. The towns. In our finance committee meeting, we were talking about. All sorts of things with the buildings, and one of them that came up was um. New Marlboro, and. At some point, if they're going to do, do renovations to that building, they're going to have to make it ADA compliant, and. I don't know how that's going to happen, because it's a split level building. I presume they'd have to put in some type of elevator. Um. I don't. I, again, that goes back to that, that comment of, well, if. These massive um investments are going to be made into these buildings, I don't know that the. The district necessarily wants to be bound. To those massive investments, and then later on, it gets reverted back to the town, and we haven't recouped our investments, so um, those are my thoughts um. Uh, as disorganized as they are. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Uh, so. Whenever somebody thinks of a capital cost. Particularly towns and their finances and. As opposed to an operational cost, um. A capital improvement. Is. Uh, and should be considered. Any new. Item, equipment. Windows, boiler. Or as Colin was saying, ADA requirements, et cetera. And um. So the word maintenance and repair. Isn't really clear enough. Because maintenance or repair. Of an existing state of a school. And an existing item. Would be a repair or the maintenance of an existing item. If a boiler needs fixing, you fix it. If a boiler needs replacing, that's a capital cost. If windows need replacing, that's new windows, and that should be considered a capital cost, because it's an improvement to the building. And even the assessors would tell you that that. Relates to its value. So we do have a problem with maintenance and repair, and it does have to be clarified. Any, any additional. Uh, piece of equipment or, or um addition or renovation. Uh, is a capital cost, and I think we have to be careful about that if we all agree that. We're not going to put capital monies into a building that we don't own as a district.
Well, I don't know if we've all agreed.
No, I'm saying if.
Yeah. Yeah, so there is a separate section that's also bracketed here. About how to deal with capital costs. It's not. I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest maintenance and repair, including capital costs. There's a separate. Section about capital costs. The, the philosophical question I was asking without regard to the language on this page. Is, do we agree that? If the district by. Two-thirds vote of the school committee and three-quarters vote of the town. Towns agree to incur. Debt to cover capital costs. Um. Do we agree on, on one of these buildings that's leased, right? Then do we agree that that's? A district expense as opposed to? An expense of the town of Egremont for the Egremont School, or the town of New Marlboro for the town of, for the New Marlboro School?
Well, I think you'd have to show me the definition of a capital cost that's written into the agreement somewhere.
All right, well, there's a chart of accounts that Desi has that I can bring to the next meeting. That has all those definitions. One of Desi's cautions to us. Is to make sure our definitions line up with their. Their definitions of what a capital. Cost is under this chart of accounts. And I don't, I don't have that for today.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to use their definition. I just think we should know what it is. So that when we get a bill or a request for a repair, we know which way to file it. That's all.
Okay.
Oh, and by the way, Lucy, just to be clear, I am in favor of us taking on the insurance and the maintenance, repair and utilities, et cetera.
Okay. Uh, Nadine?
Yeah, I, I feel very much like John does. I, I think we have to be very clear as to what a capital expenditure is. Um, I absolutely think that it's the district's responsibility to, you know, maintain the building that they're using to educate the kids, such as. Plowing and heating and. Fixing a broken window and keeping the plumbing working, but you know, if uh. If there's a major expenditure such as roof, windows, elevator, ADA compliance, et cetera, I think that's a whole different animal. It's investing in the value of the property itself and not just the use.
Uh, Tara?
So, since it, since basically it's Marlboro Central we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, I, I, I understand what everybody's saying, and I, I don't say that necessarily that I disagree with what you're saying. Um, and yes, New Marlboro Central may need, you know, a, a, a large amount of repairs, possibly, you know, um, to the building and, and certainly isn't ADA, which we've known for a long time. And the school district has known that too, but because they have an ADA building, it wasn't necessary to make this ADA. The, the, the thing I will bring forward is, is. Is if there is a capital expense such as that. Then it has to go to the town. And they have to vote the money. And I'm not sure whether you would. You know, who knows what they will do, whether, whether even if the town could afford to take on that debt with it, or any and other debt that they have. And whether they would in fact approve a large debt expenditure. So the question is, is, is also to throw into this whole mess. Is what if that happened? And the town couldn't afford to take on the debt? Or didn't approve the debt, because that has to be, you know, a, a two-thirds vote, because you're going to borrow and then has to go to a ballot question. And suppose it, it, it doesn't get approved. If it doesn't get approved, then I think, then, then what happens? What's the step there that would have to be put into here that would happen?
Yeah. Right, so the district wants. To have a, a school in Marlboro that's going to be open to kids in Marlboro and Monterey and. Great Barrington and whoever else wants to go there, right? Um. Then it seems to me. That the district needs to be willing by whatever. Apportionment method is ultimately determined, and as. As Don pointed out, what's under consideration right now is. Uh, ten ninety, you know, the flip of the ninety-ten, right? So a ten ninety split. On uh how those capital costs get apportioned. Across the eight towns. Uh, but it still is a district expense from my point of view. Um, you have apportionment, and, and maybe the answer, John. And, and Nadine and, and others who are worried about. Colin investing in a building we don't own is, is, is. Maybe we need to own the building, right?
You got it.
Is that it, Bill? Like, maybe, yeah.
That's exactly my point. Um, yeah. Why don't we, why don't we buy these schools? And then we can delete this whole section.
Well, that's a whole nother conversation. Yeah.
It's a sensitive point for um, I suppose residents of New Marlboro, and I should. Uh, confess that uh I have a granddaughter who goes to that school and she loves it. Um, but um. You know, we're, we're, we're arguing, not arguing, but we're discussing the minutia of who pays for what. Because. These. Facilities are not owned, and um if they were owned by the, the district. Um. Th- these would not be questions we'd be dealing with.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's some sort of springing mechanism, right? So that there doesn't need to be a decision. To take title now, but if. If there were a decision to make a significant capital investment in any, in either of those schools. Uh, at that point. There would be um. A transfer title. I don't know. Something to think about.
I have. Yeah.
What? Let John go, uh, uh, you know. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I just, I want to comment on what Bill said and, and Lucy both, which is, which is where I was going with this. Which is, I agree that the tat, that the district should own the schools, and I just want to point out some of the um. The issues around that. Uh, the first question you might want to ask yourself if you're in Marlboro and Egremont, and if, and the district might want to ask is. Why do these towns want to own these buildings? Um, if you want to be part of the district. Um, the district should probably own them. That takes you guys, you guys, meaning these towns, off the hook for capital costs. And it also um. Makes clear the point of the building. The purpose of the building is not that it is a town-owned property. The purpose of the building is that it's a district school. And in my opinion, you know, we should ask the question, if New Marlboro and Egremont want the district to pick up the capital costs of these. District facilities, then they should actually give them to the district. And the reason why I say give them is because we all know that with older buildings like this. At least the one in Monterey, for example, and Alford, those could not be repurposed. And Great Barrington has spent many, many years struggling with repurposing. School buildings. Uh, Stockbridge had some more success because it was big enough to repurpose. Um, but in fact, the school district leases part of that. And the town uses part of that building. And I think the question is, let's, and I agree with Bill, we, I think we need a clean slate going in. I don't think we should, we should have to deal with this later. There's no mechanism. If suddenly Marlboro needs four hundred thousand dollars in capital increases. We, we haven't formalized a mechanism to make that decision. We're going to end up right where Tara says we're going to end up. We're going to end up with a situation we have not planned for. And all of that is taken care of if the, if the towns give the buildings to. to the district, and I would say in this case, Egremont certainly um uh might be able to make a little money selling that building on the open market a- as a municipality. I'm not sure if New Marlboro could sell that building, I don't know if anybody, any developer would be willing to put in the money to make it a going concern for a business or even for, you know, apartments or rentals or co-ops, it can happen. Uh, but towns, towns are really historically not very good at that. Um, so I just wanna throw out there that I think the solution, if people can look into themselves and ask themselves why they feel it's so essential that they own the building, and yet they're so trepidatious about how they're gonna pay for them. Well, here's the solution.
George, do you wanna weigh in on this, as Chair of the Select Board in, in Egremont?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Egremont, you know, leases the uh Egremont School um to uh the Southern Berkshire District, as Bonnie said, uh but, but this whole conversation as Tara said, uh really is about the New Marlboro School. Um, because uh Egremont has already made all of the capital investments, all the ADA requirements um that uh are building required. And um you know, it's a building um that uh is on the both the state and the federal historic trust, I mean, it it's a pretty complicated issue. And uh I have a feeling that um you know, as, as Bonnie said, I, I believe the number is um five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what the, the town of Egremont put into it about uh four or five years ago. And um I, I think, I understand why John is ra- uh raising those issues and it's, it's worth a discussion. But I'm just warning you that it's a can of worms.
Mm-hmm. Alright, well, I, if the, are there any more hands up?
Yeah, Lucy, so just, just, just to answer, just to answer one of the questions is, um uh, yeah, I understand that repurposing of, of municipal buildings is very difficult and Great Barrington, you know, had a lot of those and had a lot of issues with it. The difference may be with this building in New Marlboro of uh is that there's a large piece of land with it. Uh you know, it's got quite, quite a good, it's got a big, it's got a ball field and stuff, it, it's got quite a bit. Um, so for repurposing, repurposing purposes might not be that the building is worth saving, but it might not, it might not be um, a, um, an architect may come in and say, you know, we could just ta- topple this building and just put something new up, and we've got plenty of land to put a septic and water and everything we need here and parking and everything else. Um, that, so that it, it may be valuable for repurposing, I'm not saying it is, and who knows, you know, none of us have any idea about that and things go awry pretty quickly. Um, but that's, I, I, I don't, I, I've never had this discussion with anybody of why, why we want to own it. I don't think I've ever heard anybody talk about why we wanted to own it, we just owned it and it, and the school used it. Uh, so to go any further on the discussion with that, I have, I, I don't know what to tell you.
Uh Colin and then Don?
Um, I'm, I'm just gonna agree with George that it is a can of worms, but um in this meeting and then the finance committee meeting, we bumped into the issue of the of these two schools, um, and um, and I suppose also um the, the high school and, you know, the, the Undermountain School in Sheffield. Um, but I, I guess it, you know, it somehow this needs to be addressed and maybe it's a bigger a bigger discussion and bigger issue than these paragraphs that we're looking at, um, it just feels like something more definitive needs to be sorted out, like, do we purchase them or not? And that's a big, that's a big conversation, so goes back to the can of worms, I don't know what to do about it.
Okay, Don?
I'm concerned about the complications that may arise if we try to combine a requirement of a sale of schools with this, um, with the creation of the uh district, and I, I think that um, we ought to consider checking with our council on that and with the, with the state. And I'm kind of thinking that maybe uh we ought to only provide for uh operational expenses and leave the question of um major uh capital improvements through a decision by the uh by the, by the board, by the uh uh new, new uh education committees.
Well, I think, I think there is going to be a recommendation coming out of the finance subcommittee on how to handle capital costs in these two schools. So maybe we should table this for now. Um, do a little bit more homework. Um, and maybe sort of develop a, a motion uh that's thought through uh with more specific language, because the language in this draft is really just there for brainstorming purposes, it's, it's not a proposal, it just sort of lists out the issues for consideration, and I think um it's gonna require another discussion with tighter language developed. But I, I do think it is possible to figure this out. Uh, this language out in this agreement without having to resolve the question of whether or not we buy the, the schools or, you know, you can just, you can just have title to a building and not own the underlying land. That's sort of a common uh approach, actually, that's how it works in, in Stockbridge with the, the Old Town Hall. Um, or at least that's how it used to work, so I think the the building was owned by one entity and there was a ground lease uh for the, the property on which the building sat, so there are all kinds of possibilities there. Um, I think our goal is to protect the district, but also protect the towns in this regional agreement, so different possibilities remain possible going forward. That would be my suggestion, any, any more discussion on this before we go to the next topic, Bonnie?
Yeah, Lucy, I think that's a, a, a smart way to go. Um, Carl was also involved, Carl and I both are involved at the time of both the Monterey closing and all of the issues related to Egremont. And George has noted the key points. And I think John's comment about this issue of insurance maintenance, we can't leave it ambiguous, I know we spend an inordinate amount of money in legal fees dealing with insurance. We don't want to encumber the new district with uh problems that we can um address now.
Okay. Uh, Ben?
I just wanted to circle back to your saying that Desi has very clear definitions around capital expenses versus maintenance and repair. And our language needs to reflect that, and that may give us the clarity that we need, because I agree with everybody that we, we don't have time to start dealing with buying schools, selling schools or any of that. It, because it's vastly complex, so I just wanna make sure that we take, have the Desi language in front of us when we continue this conversation, so that we're working within an, and the framework that we need to be working in, thanks.
Yeah. Alright, um. We already covered D withdrawal member towns, that's a redundant entry there, so the next thing on uh the agenda is intra-district choice. Um, I just wanna introduce this topic. I really want Jake to be here for a discussion of this topic and I, I don't.
I'm here.
Oh, you are?
I just joined.
Great.
Lucky you.
Join just in time to introduce this topic and give us some context.
Sure, that, is that my cue?
Hmm.
That's my cue.
That's your cue.
Alright.
We see.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually don't even have the agreement rate in front of me, but one of the um.
Can't you see it on the screen?
I can kinda see it, um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not in an ideal.
So all the agreement says is, the committee shall develop an interest school district choice policy, period, that's all the, the draft language says, and then we have to be determined possible inclusion in regional agreement of provision that children of the member towns are entitled to attend the school in closest proximity to their residence. Include possible transition period for families with children who schools not in closest proximity who want to keep their children in those schools.
Sure. Right, so I think um uh, the question here is, how do we um, as a merged district, assign students to schools? Uh, and I think the general rule is that you assign students to the, the geographically closest school, the school that's closest to their home. But we have a situation now where we have students who are attending a school um that may or may, may not be the closest school, we actually, we in fact know that there are many students that it, it is not. Um, so um, the question is, how would we deal with those students um? You know, uh in, in, in a new agreement, and the recommendation that I would make is that A, um, the committee makes the decision. And it would be written obviously into a school committee policy that students attend the school that are, that's closest to their home. Two, that students who are currently in a school are allowed to remain in that school. Uh, so that we're not, as we form a new region, we're not booting kids from the school they're currently in, because it doesn't happen to be the school that's closest to them. We want them to be able to finish out their education at the school and with the cohort that they're currently in school with. Does that make sense? Um, so we need a provision written to, um, to ensure that that happens. We'd have to make a decision on how we want that sort of cutoff to occur, does it happen at sort of at the end of a school range, so when a student is done at Undermountain and potentially moving into middle school, that they would then move to DuBois versus um Mount, Mount Everett, I think that would still yet to be, we, we could certainly um talk that out. Um, and then the third piece is as you look forward down the road, how do you address um families who may um choice in- intra-district, meaning they don't choose the school or don't want their child to go to the school that is geographically closest to their home. They'd prefer their child to go to another one of the district schools. Um, and you would, we would need to develop an intra-district choice policy, um. If you actually um are interested, if you go into the facilities report, and I was reviewing my notes last night um, that we wrote a year ago with buildings and capital, it's on the resources page, at the end of that, I actually included an intra-district choice sample policy that we used in Pittsfield, because we had eight elementary schools, and so some families would say, we, we'd like our child to go to this particular school. Um, and my um my recommendation would be that intra-district choice be allowed under two conditions, one is that there's space and two is that um the district is not compelled to provide transportation. So those are things to think about, um, that could be written into the agreement or could be pushed to the new transitional school committee to hash out in policy. Does that help?
Yeah, that's great, and so what I, in the interest of time, what I'd like is, with that introduction, I'd like at the next meeting, if you could write up that proposed outline, Jake, we could have it on a screen so people can sort of parse through it.
Hmm.
I think that would probably be the best way to proceed, unless people have questions of Jake um now on what he just proposed as a, an approach. I don't see any question, oh, Bonnie has a question.
Yes, just a, really in a way, a suggestion that um one of the things that we, we've done is um, if, if a child has selected, family selected to have a student, let's say, go to New Marlboro. The issue is if they already, let's say, have a child in second grade, that they would then have preference for allowing that, the, a sibling who comes along to be able to go to that school. And um, I don't know if it would apply as an eight district, that a town, but um we've allowed that uh, if a family chooses a particular school and it's within district, as long as they bring the child to a certain point, the transportation is covered. I don't know, Jake, if you can, a wheel would be allowed in an eight district and eight town district to not give transportation since it's all one district.
Hmm.
So if, if you could look into that, and the other thing is particularly with New Marlboro and Egremont, we stipulated that certain towns have priority for admission before others. And that was a request that came from um Monterey uh as lo- as, well, obviously New Marlboro, Monterey wa- was guaranteed um reference over the other towns.
Hmm.
So I think, yeah, thanks, Bonnie, I think the question for us all to think about, which we know in our next meeting is how much of this do we wanna require in the regional agreement, understanding how tough it is to amend a regional agreement? And how much of this do we wanna leave to the new district school committee to develop policy uh on, and so I think that's sort of the critical issue for us, how much are, do we wanna bind the hands of the new school committee on how to handle intra-district choice? Bill?
I was thinking the same thing, um, just leave the first sentence in that section and delete all the, the red ink. Punt the ball, kick the can down the road, whatever, whatever you wanna call it. It can get, it's one of these issues, it can get very difficult, and we're trying to complete this agreement without, you know, without obviously leaving important stuff out, but maybe this is something that could be deferred to the, the new committee.
Susan?
Uh. Um, I, I think that this question is going to be a um, a very a question of great concern to the parents, um, they're gonna wanna know where their kids are gonna be going to school. So I really, um, I think we do have to spend a lot of time on it and um make it as clear as possible, otherwise I don't think you'll have any parent support around this, if they have no idea where their kids are going to school. Especially the elementary kids.
Hmm.
Don?
I agree with Susan, but I just wanted to say that if we were going to go with this first sentence, the least we should do would be to add language saying that every effort should be taken to uh make uh choice possible. A, a philosophical statement. Uh, if we're gonna do it that way, but I prefer, I think Susan is really right.
Hmm.
Detail it.
John?
Um, I totally agree that this is a very sensitive issue. I think the question that we're asked to consider is whether or not this is an issue for this planning board to write.
planning board to write into the agreement permanently. Or whether this is in fact an issue for the transitional school committee and the permanent school. So it, when I say that I I think we need to decide what our role is and what the school commit future school committee's role is, I think we need to be, I think we have a lot on our plate that is our responsibility. And I think I personally think this is not something that we should try and tackle. I think that the beauty of the elected school committee and of the whole role of school committee members in the future is that we are going to get a chance to decide who those people are going to be. And we're going to get a chance to find out what their views are on these issues. And then we're going to vote and we're going to let them do their job. And this is again, it's not to say that I don't think it's critical. I think it's very critical. But the question is, is it our job or is it the new school committee's job? And I think it's the new school committee's job.
Okay. Go ahead, take three more comments and then we're going to move on. We're not going to vote on this tonight. So Nadine?
Yeah, I think that I agree with Susan completely. This is a very important topic to the parents. And if we want their vote to support this new district, then the language in the regional agreement has to be open enough that choice is going to be available. And obviously Jake's guidance on that with is there space, you know, does it make sense? Is is something that will have to be determined, I think, on a year by year basis, based on the enrollment. So I think I think we have to be careful how we word this, but I think we have to we have to be strong enough to say that choice is of value to every family and we need to be able to ensure them that they will have a be able to have a conversation on that, or we're not going to get their vote.
Holland?
I I just want to make sure I understand what Susan said. I think Susan is, and Susan, you can clarify for me. You're saying we should have something in here because the the voters of our of our our new district are going to vote on this before the transitional school committee can make a decision about this. So therefore they're going to have this unknown about what's going to happen. So let's take the unknown away so that we can, we can have more success at at a reaching a agreement. Is that is that correct? I mean, because I also agree with John about we shouldn't get involved in this, let let the school committee do what they need to do, but but that'll be after the vote, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, all these new hands have gone up since I said I was only going to take three more. So I I'm going to recognize everyone, but that means we have to stay past seven thirty. So just understand that Bonnie and then Deb and then Peter.
Really quickly, having dealt with this issue, Susan and Nadine are completely on target because you will not get votes of people who have children potentially going or currently in our district if this unknown is not addressed in the regional agreement.
Okay, Deb?
And I'm going to echo that also. I think we run the risk of people feeling they're going to have fewer choices in a single district than they have with two districts. Because right now they do have a choice option and I would hate for people to feel like that might be that could possibly be taken away from them. So I think it's really important that while it may, it may not be where the policy ultimately needs to be for for the for the purposes of getting this to move forward, we really have to assure parents that there will be choices. I think it's one of the selling points of making this one district. And if we take away that selling point or don't promise that selling point in whatever way we can, we we've lost, we've lost a selling point.
Yeah, and just cognizant of of the press being on the line. No one is suggesting that we take anything away. The question is, do we spell out what the interest school district choice policy will be in this regional agreement? Or do we allow the transition committee, school committee to have some flexibility on that going going forward? And and it's not all or nothing, right? So we could spell out some part of it and allow there to be some flexibility as well. But I'm going to cut off the conversation now so that we can.
Lucy, could I, I'm sorry, just one more point. I'm sorry. The choice, the wording in that agreement is also, as it is standing out right now, is it's it's triggering some nervousness with the words assigned. The children would be assigned seems to take away that the concept of choice. So it's just, you know, that's that's part of the nervousness I'm hearing. And I just wanted to I don't know if there's ways to soften that language as as we go forward.
Okay. Noted. That's in three B. Can we play with that language to soften it? Okay, Peter, you had your hand up at one point.
The immediate past speakers have made the points I was going to make.
Okay. All right. So we got through a lot. We got through everything we had on the agenda under continued discussion of the district agreement. We'll have a new draft for you before the meeting on the twenty ninth. So Jake, do you want to give a short update on DSE state delegation? State funding updates and new high school estimate?
Yeah, sure. So just wanted to let folks know that we've continued to meet with DSE reps in the Office of Regionalization. Christine Lynch and Michelle Griffin with our attorney and have been reviewing the language on the agreement and then lots of just outstanding questions and process advice that we're working in partnership with them. And it, I think it's been a really productive set of conversations that I believe that Lucy probably started today by giving you an update on some of the feedback on that. Where we continue to do work with the state with the delegation, the Berkshire delegation. Both, actually, right now, we're sort of approaching it from the Burke twelve side. But Burke twelve also feeds into supporting the regional school district planning board work. And so we've met with Senator Mark and we have a meeting scheduled, I believe, this Friday with our House reps. So we'll continue to use that time with them to update them on the work occurring in this group and and generally ask for their support both on funding and in financing for our projects and also, you know, support for any potential incentives and legislative work. We may have to do it to get some of the pieces of our project through. I did want to just call out, I I had a slide, but I really can't show anything right now in terms of where I'm at. But I did an analysis of the chapter seventy money that came into the county through the governor's budget, which was incredibly ambitious and actually very generous to public school districts across the Commonwealth. A lot of money went out. And it's striking. I'll share it with you all, a snapshot of it, but it's striking. There's a line on the south side of Pittsfield in which every single district from Pittsfield North got pretty significant increases under the Student Opportunity Act. In every district south of Pittsfield, including Lee Lennox, Southern Berks, Berkshire Hills, Richmond, Farmington River, got minimum student aid, thirty dollars a student. And I know I can see people shaking their head right now. I keep saying to folks that the Student Opportunity Act is not going to bail folks out. It's and it appears that's certainly not the case in South County. So I just want folks to understand that the the continuing trend of additional, well, for lack of a better word, burden, fiscal responsibility for paying for the school is going to fall at the local level is not going to be offset by state aid. And I just want folks to understand that. I'll send that that grid along just so you have it. And then finally, we're asked pretty consistently about the high school cost estimates and how we got there. And I put together a draft memo, which is just about ready to be released. So when you get it, you know what it's about. It's really sort of how do we estimate this hundred million dollars or thereabouts that we've been using as a placeholder to estimate what it would cost to potentially build a eight town merged high school. So we're waiting for confirmation and just one final variable. When we get that, we'll send it to you all. I think that does it, Lucy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to move to the subcommittee updates and start with Nadine and finance subcommittee.
Well, I'm happy to say that after many months and lots and lots of discussion that I think the committee came to some healthy compromise and understanding not only of their own town's position, but of all the other towns involved. And I will be very happy to be able to bring to the full board the presentation that we think is probably the very best we can get at this, at this point, we've we've seen a lot of give and take, and I'm very, very proud of the work of this committee. It has taken a tremendous amount of work. I actually said I felt like I gave birth. I felt like I pushed out that project. So.
And you did it without a lot of yelling, Nadine.
Yeah, the the committee worked really, really hard. And I just want everyone to understand that every town was considered and every town's member thought about how this affected other towns and not just their own. And that's what this is all about. How does this best meet the needs of all of our kids? And I'm happy with the work we've done.
So that's a really good teaser for the presentation that we're all going to see at the next full board meeting. Community outreach. We're continuing to do what we've been doing all along, which is brainstorm and develop different ways to connect with community members to develop a community, community education campaign to make sure the residents of the eight towns have as much good, accurate information as we can get out there in an understandable and digestible way. It's a big job and we meet pretty much every two weeks, although I think our next meeting is actually going to be three weeks out to to keep that work going. It's it's never ending. And I want to congratulate the members of of that subcommittee on sticking with it and coming up with creative ideas and really working collaboratively and productively together to help get good information out. We've got the meeting coming up on the eighteenth, Jake. You just want to give a shout out on that.
Yeah, so the the educational visioning committee convening part two or the second session is scheduled for this Saturday from nine to twelve at the Great Barrington Senior Center. I was a little bit more hopeful on at our education subcommittee meeting that we had, I think fifteen, last week we had, I think fifteen people signed up and that we would have seen a little bit more traffic. In fact, we saw the opposite. We had two people who say they couldn't make it now. So we're actually down to thirteen. We're going in the wrong direction. So I would really encourage people, if they're interested, to encourage their friends and neighbors and others to come out on Saturday. We have a lot of resources invested in this work and seems like quite a bit of effort for a dozen people, not that I'm opposed to holding the session with a dozen people, which was our cutoff. So we just are making it. But anyways, please spread the word. I've sent you all me email last week with a link and some suggestions around language to use, but probably the best I can say.
Okay. Equality, Deb?
Sure, we just had our meeting last night. We had have a robust group and we're working on our recommendations that will include the possibilities that a new district could offer for students and for step and for faculty and for the community. And identifying the concerns that need that will require attention if this process goes forward. We're looking forward to our meeting again on April twenty fifth, and we're looking forward at that point to get the input from this meeting on Saturday, as well as some meetings that have been taking place with middle school students so that we can get their perspective on it and to incorporate that into what we will bring forward to this group hopefully in May. There's a lot of good discussion and I think as with with all of the topics, what what is it that's most important to bring to this board and then to therefore to bring to the public as we move forward in this process? So I'm grateful to everyone in the group that was there last night for their contributions and the work that that they're doing.
Jake, do you want to give a short update on the CVTE advisory group?
Sure, yeah. And Frank Cody's on the line too. So Frank and I have been partnering on work with the CVTE advisory group, been meeting since November and last Friday, we published a tool that we've been working on developing for about six weeks and really excited about the tool because it captures a lot of the elements of evaluating various CBTE programs in terms of which ones are have the highest potential for inclusion in a newly merged and constructed high school. If you recall, when we wrote the CBTE report a year ago, we included a list of, I don't know, twelve or fourteen programs that were high promise, high probability made the most sense. And this is an attempt to sort of winnow down that curate that list to a subset of of six or seven. And we're not only looking at chapter seventy four programs, but also looking at other ways in which students could have experiences in those particular industry and occupational areas through non chapter seventy four programs such as innovative pathways, early college, and even just electives that are offered in the school. So I'm really happy that we have this great group together. They're now charged with doing a lot of work over the next two weeks to complete this evaluation tool. And we're going to then look at the results as a group discussed, and then hopefully we'll be able to embed that into sort of the broader themes and findings that are coming out of the ed visioning work and the ed equality subcommittee work, sort of bundle it all together at some point. So, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking that that's going to be part of what we start looking at on the twenty fifth because it will be a piece of the the total recommendation. So very excited about that work.
Thanks.
Okay, and finally, operations, John?
So Marie Messini commented on thirty six of the routes proposed by Alliance Ed for busing in the new district. And twenty six, there were twenty six responses, like extensive responses to the thirty six questions or comments by Marie. They're very granular. They go, you know, all the way down to turnarounds and bridges and particular students and locations of homes. We're up to a kind of a six page document at this point. And I'm not sure that Rich has communicated all this back to Marie and they've settled on his responses to her responses to his plan. But he's supposed to be bringing us a document soon that will clarify all of this and then we'll 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 put it forward to the rest of you folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're actually on schedule and I'm going to open up a public comment again. George, somehow you ended up back in the attendee group. But are there any public comments? But are, are there any public comments? From anyone attending? I don't see any. So again, our, our next meeting is on March twenty ninth, thank you everyone for. For uh, joining us tonight, I think we had a really productive, good meeting and we'll do some more work on the regional agreement, we'll circulate that. Uh, before our next meeting, please do look at. Everything that's in red and if you're not getting stuff color coded, just email me and I'll send it to you direct. But um, if there are no questions or objections to any of the suggestions by Desi or Renee Wood. I'm just going to, after the next draft, accept all of those and they will be incorporated into the regional agreement. So if you've got a question or an objection to any of those changes. Just let me know and I'll put it on the agenda to discuss next time.
Lucy had one last comment, if you don't mind. I just wanted to um. I was reviewing a lot of resources last week and. Um, it was a little, caught me by surprise that. Our next meeting on the twenty ninth will mark one year exactly. The date that uh, we published our report last year. So it was um, it was just sort of a moment of reflection to sort of think about how much work and effort. Has gone into this incredibly complicated, but incredibly important endeavor. And I just wanted to just thank everyone for all the hours that they put in. To this project, um, I, I truly believe we're making progress and we're heading towards a decision one way or the other. Um, and I, I think you all should be proud of that.
Thank you, well, your, your report is one year old, but this planning board is now three years old.
Yeah.
So uh, we're getting up there, you know, we're going to start getting gray hair pretty soon.
Look what happened to me.
All right, everyone, thank you very much, see you next time.
Yeah.
Oh wait, motion to adjourn. Motion. All right. Uh, any objection, hearing none, we are adjourned at whatever time it is.
Good night, everybody.